Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 10th, 2025 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at Dare County Administrative Buildings in Manio, and the time is 5:00 P. M. Before we begin, I request a moment of silence. Next, I'd like to recognize our commissioners here tonight, Mr. Burge, and I thought I seen him miss balance. Thank you all so much for being here and all the dedication and support that y'all put in for our school district. It means a lot to us. Next, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Brower.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. We do have announcements, recognitions, and highlights to go through today, a little bit of unfinished business and some new business. We are in the home stretch, so, well, without further ado, I will turn it over to Ms. Fairbanks to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, I'm Caroline Fuller. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that, Caroline. I had Elizabeth on my notes.
Next verse of order of business this evening is to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Will you approve the agenda?
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bateman. Any further discussion? All in five. Hi, say aye. Any nays? Aye carries. Thank you. Next, we're turning it over to Ms. Hitch for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public regarding at its regular scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters like board policy implementation, quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 2340, presentations are limited to a max of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks and insults, and statements that are disruptive to the orderly operation of the meeting are not permitted. So I will call you up in the order in which you signed up, I believe, and please just make sure you introduce yourself when you come up, and then I'll start your three minutes. Heidi Hess.
Hi, my name is Heidi Hess, and I'm going to explain. According to a report by the American Economic Association, having a quality teacher positively impacts a student's future. The report shows that students with quality teachers were, quote, "more likely to attend college, earn higher salaries, and were less likely to have children as teenagers." Quality teachers with experience, advanced degrees, proper compensation, and subject-specific certification all contribute to a student achievement. However, since 2011, when it comes to teacher compensation, the North Carolina General Assembly has systematically cut teacher benefits and given lower-than-inflation pay raises. I'm sure you know this, but North Carolina's average teacher pay is $13,000 less than the national average and ranks 38th in the nation, and North Carolina's average teacher's starting teacher salary is ranked 42nd in the nation. Although you don't have control over the North Carolina state salary schedule, what you do have control over is the local teacher supplement. Just this year, you all accepted an increase to your compensation, with Superintendent Bassnight explaining that you had not received an increase to your compensation since 2000. This resulted in a 209% increase in your compensation. Since 2008, do you know how much of an increase Dare County teachers have had to their compensation, even when you take into consideration the local supplement? About a 25% increase. Although I am encouraged by the increase in the local supplement last year, prior to last year, the local supplement increased by a measly 9.6% in 16 years. Even with the increase in the local supplement last year, Dare County ranks 84th of 116 counties when it comes to the local supplement. Do you know where Dare County does not rank 84th? Average homeless price. Out of 100 counties, Dare County ranks 4th highest in the average homeless price. The average homeless price for Dare County as of June 2024 was $725,000. Wake County has one of the highest local teacher supplements of more than $10,200, and their average homeless price is just $532,000. Mecklenburg also has one of the highest local supplements of $10,800, and their average homeless price is just $477,000. Additionally, Superintendent Bassnight asked for an annual increase to your compensation based on the Consumer Price Index. I think it's only fair that Dare County teachers also have an automatic minimum increase to their local supplement based on the CPI or something similar, so that they can have some predictability to their compensation. Raising the local supplement again to compete with counties like Wake and Mecklenburg would be a bold move that would ensure that we keep our amazing teachers and send a signal to quality teachers across the state that Dare County is where you will be rewarded the most. Think of the message that would be sent not only to the excellent teachers we already have here in Dare County.
Hess, that's your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Miriam Rollin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff members, and the public. My name is Miriam Rollin. I live in Duck. I'm here today, again, to talk about the need for Dare County Board to issue a specific policy and/or guidance document saying what schools need to do if ICE comes to the school. You issued a statement in early February, but as you know, that statement provided no specific guidance at all. However, the good news is, most of your work is already done. You can just use the guidance memo issued by Wake County Schools, just change the names, and/or the policy revision issued recently by Richmond Schools. Either of those are great examples of what Dare County could do. Why is this necessary? There used to be a federal policy preventing ICE from entering schools, churches, et cetera, and that policy was rescinded in January. Let's take a hypothetical. Tomorrow, ICE agents with guns, vests, et cetera, come to a Dare County school and say that they have an ICE warrant and want to get a student from a classroom. Just tell them which classroom the student is in. What do you think the school staff, absent specific guidance, is likely to do? I'm pretty sure they give them the info and direct them to the classroom. Then the armed ICE guards barge into the classroom, pull out a student in front of all their classmates. Then, if it's the end of that class period, as the students being led out of the class, all the other classes are emptying into the halls, and they watch the student being escorted down the hall and out the door. This causes unnecessary trauma to the child, to all the other children, even the teachers. When word gets out, further trauma is caused on the part of parents and other students and staff. This is all preventable trauma with a policy and/or guidance statement shared with all school staff and all parents, similar to the ones in Wake County and Richmond Schools. Such a policy and/or guidance statement would mean that schools should, absent exigent, in other words, life-threatening circumstances, only allow ICE officials into the school office where all visitors must check in. Then, if there is a judicial warrant, not just an administrative warrant, the school staff should bring a student to the office rather than having ICE officials roaming through the halls. Those are the approaches taken in the Wake County Schools memo, the Richmond policy. This follows federal law, state law, and it's just the right thing to do for our kids, for our parents, for our community, and for all the educators involved. Let's prevent unavoidable trauma to kids, parents, and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rollin. Just introduce yourself, Ms. Midget.
Pardon?
Will you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I will. I'm Marion Midget. I'm back. Glad to see all of you, some new faces here. I'm here to present the Citizens' Guide for the League of Women Voters, and you have one?
I have them for the board.
You have them. You haven't given... Oh, okay. All right. This is probably an extra one if you've already picked one up at the office or at the post office or somewhere else, but put it in your car. There's good information. Again, I'm Marion Midget, representing the League of Women Voters of Dare County, here to present the Citizens' Guide, your guide to community services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national government agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters, Citizens' Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and the local businesses that donated generously toward the publication expenses. This is how we do this. Thank you, and thanks to all staff members who helped update information for this year's version. Somebody got a call, maybe a couple of them, to check information, to make sure, and, as I said, that the donors are on the back. League members are now distributing, probably have distributed, 6,400 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the Baum Center, the Virginia Tillet Center, and the Fessenden Center, as well as town and other county offices. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. Students 16 and older may join free, without payment until they're no longer students, and new members are always welcome. Thank you for your support. We know you'll find the guide helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Midget. And our fourth and last speaker is Laura Kissler Brown. Did I say your name right, ma'am? Sure.
Hi, I'm Laura Kissler Brown. I'm following up on letters that I wrote the board members in the fall regarding my concerns about sexually inappropriate activity witnessed by two students who entered a concession stand at Manio High School to get ICE during the school day on September 18th, 2024, to find Mr. Wheeler in a compromised position with no socks or shoes on his feet.
You can't bring staff complaints, confidential personnel issues, confidential student issues at public comment.
So what my concern is, is that the schools and the "see something, say something" were not impacted in the way that I believe that students need to be heard. I feel like that Dare County Schools failed the students in the misrepresentation that my daughter came home telling me that students had lied. I feel like messaging about students and about "see something, say something" is important because I feel like students are the best reporters to safety in the school system. And what I truly believe is that if students don't feel like this is a safe reporting system, that they will somehow be called liars or told that they are not telling the truth, that the system doesn't work to prevent other things like mental health crises, threats of school violence, and other things that the reporting systems are so important to protect students. So my concern today is the follow-through with the reporting system, that it is effective as long as students trust its effectiveness. When it is misused, which I would beg to differ, and it is maybe spoken that it has been misused, it jeopardizes the safety of the students and the staff and the faculty in the schools. So my concern today is that if this system is not used properly, other students will fail to report, and the students that have made reports will feel like their reports are not taken seriously. So I know that research has shown, through the Sandy Hook Promise, that 90% of school, I guess, emergencies have been reported by students. That is significant when we're trying to protect the safety of our students, and I really do believe that this reporting system works when done correctly and properly. I think that law enforcement and...
That's your time, Ms. Hitch.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. That's it for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch, and thank everyone for public comment. We're going to turn it over now to announcements and recognitions, and I have a few to start out with tonight. Excuse me, my sinuses are killing me. First, I would like to recognize Mr. Bassnight for successfully completing the Next Generation Superintendent Development Program sponsored by the North Carolina School Superintendent Association. This program is designed to support superintendents and strengthen their leadership skills to transform education systems. It also provides a valuable guidance for superintendents as they reflect on the enhancement of their effectiveness and the leadership of the district. Mr. Bassnight, thank you so much. Next, I'd like to share the National School Social Worker Week. It is March 2nd through the 8th. I would say for their comments, their commitment to helping students navigate academically, social, emotional challenges, and ensuring that every child has the opportunity to succeed in Dare County schools. And thank you all so much for the hard work that y'all put into each and every day. Last, not least, is last Friday was Maintenance Work Appreciation Day. I'd like to recognize our maintenance staff for all their hard work and dedication that they do each and every day, not only during the day, but also behind the scenes. They are our go-to people that when school is delayed or if their school is not being held in the facilities, they're making sure that everything is taken care of promptly, safely, for the next adventure. As you all know, things can change very quickly in a very short time in Dare County. So with that being said, Mr. Ian, thank you so much for you and your staff as maintenance appreciation. Next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bassnight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I have the privilege to introduce you to two of Dare County Schools' outstanding student athletes this evening, and they both happen to be from First Flight High School this evening. If, ladies, if you can bring your families up.
Miss Morgan Miller. Last year, during the 23-24 school year, Ms. Morgan Miller was crowned the 3A Women's Cross Country State Champion. This past November, Morgan did something that every athlete knows may be more difficult than winning a state championship. She did it again, repeating as the 3A Girls' Cross Country State Champion and cutting time off of her last year's state championship. Also standing with me here tonight is Ms. Skylah Simpson. Ms. Skylah Simpson was recently crowned the Wrestling Women's State Champion with a 15-8 decision in the 120-pound class at the state championship match. As a sophomore, Skylah compiled an impressive 24-1 record on the way to being crowned state champion this year and avenged her only loss of the season in the process. It is my honor and privilege to recognize two outstanding athletes. I always enjoy it when our staff members get recognized by those outside of our district for the incredible things that they do every day here. Tonight, we get to do that several times. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing one of our Dare County Schools' outstanding staff members, Ms. Beverly Heggie. Ms. Heggie has been recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as the Northeast Regional Science of Reading True Trailblazer Award recipient. Ms. Heggie is one of eight, only eight, recognitions given statewide for her dedicated systemic approach to improving literacy outcomes for our students. Ms. Heggie currently serves as a reading interventionist at Cape Hatteras Elementary School. Senior Director of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Office of Early Learning, Amy Ryan, and her staff, along with some help from her principal, Rachel Benton, and the entire Cape Hatteras Elementary School staff and student body, surprised Ms. Heggie with a well-choreographed fire drill. The funniest part of the whole thing was Bev was in on a webinar, Letters Web Training webinar, and we had to convince her to leave the webinar, even though we had the head of the department at DPI here waiting for her to come outside. Director Ryan said this about Bev. "She has co-facilitated professional learning opportunities and supported teachers and instructional assistants as they learn new Tier 1 and Tier 2 instructional routines and practices. Additionally, she has worked to refine her own instructional methods with a true learner's mindset to ensure that she is providing high-quality, intensive interventions aligned to student needs and data. Board, it is my honor to recognize a true trailblazer, Ms. Beverly Heggie." That day when we went out on the playground, all the kids are out there, staff's out there, and Bev's walking away from the building. She keeps on going, and we're all trying to flag her to get her to come back so we could do the presentation. She was going where she needed to be for the fire drill. That's right. That's right. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Dare County Schools' Director of Elementary Instruction and Federal Programs, Ms. Katie Spruill, and I'm going to read a letter as Katie's coming up. Superintendent Bassnight, Tom Tomberlin, Senior Director, Office of Educational Preparation, Licenseur, and Performance, Teacher Compensation and Advanced Teaching Roles Program. Thank you for submitting a proposal for the Teacher Compensation Models and Advanced Teaching Roles Program. We received many strong applications from districts across the state, and we are happy to inform you that your proposal was selected for funding this year. At this time, the State Board has not finalized that funding for this fiscal year. NCDPI will follow up after January with information about your funding in May. Congratulations and do well. So do you want me to read the number, or you want to...
I got you. It's in my presentation.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, members of the board, and Superintendent Bassnight. I'm excited to be able to give you some information on advanced teaching roles, and so we talked about, we were going to let you know about the grant, but it's, what is that, right? And so we wanted to give you some information so you know what that is and what it entails and how it kind of dovetails into what we're already doing. So, there we go. Okay. So, advanced teaching roles. So, the purpose of this is, of this grant is to, it enables us to be able to create innovative compensation models that focus on classroom teacher professional growth and lead to measurable improvements for students. And it also allows us to establish organizational changes related to compensation in order to sustain evidence-based teaching. So, all of that to say that it is very specific in what you can spend the funding on, but it's really looking at how do we take our great teachers and let them expand their knowledge that they have into our teachers to build them, so we build more great teachers. So it's really just that instructional coaching that we can give to our staff. So, the process for this, so proposals were due to NCDPI by August 16th, and we had, that was a really fun process because you couldn't just email it, you actually had to mail a USB drive to, which is like really antiquated, but that's what we did. And so there were 11 total proposals submitted from across the state, and this is not the first year that they've had this. They've had this for, I think, eight years. So there's several districts around, across the state that have advanced teaching roles in some capacity, but there were, so there were 11 total proposals for this year, and NCDPI was able to fund the six highest-rated proposals at 80% of their budget, the requested budget. And so we were awarded $917,970 to be dispersed over three years. And so we don't get all of it at one time, but it's put in three equal increments across three years because it's a three-year grant. So this is, I know you really probably can't see this, but I just wanted you to have this if you ever want to go back and look at it. So this was actually our proposed budget that we submitted with our grant. The proposal that we wrote was 44 pages, so it was like a really in-depth research article, and it was a lot of research, and you had to justify what you were doing, how you were going to do it, how this grant was going to be sustainable after the three years, because they don't want to give it to you for three years, and then it's like, okay, we can't make it happen, we're going to let it go. So we had to really talk about and put a theory of action into place for how we were going to make this happen. And so I also want to mention that it was not Katie Spruill that wrote this grant. It took, it was myself, Reese Lambert, our early literacy specialist, Denise Fallon, and Holly King. So we all kind of worked on this together, and so it really was a team effort. But that just kind of breaks down, breaks down the grant or the budget for what we have. And so what we're doing right now is, we didn't get our, so we asked for 1.1 million, and we got 917,000, which is still a really great, and we kind of shot for the moon, so we put some extra things in there, knowing that we probably weren't going to get the full amount because usually they funded about 80%, 80%. And so some of these things, what we're working on right now is, okay, how do we take what we, like, you know, proposed, and then what are the things that we absolutely have to do? So that's what we're working on right now. So how does this align to our current initiatives? So if you remember, well, some of you weren't here, and so, but we had teaching and learning facilitators that we implemented at each of our elementary... And so, we designed the teaching and learning facilitators with the framework of advanced teaching roles. And so it aligns. And so now that we have the funding, which is wonderful that we have this to be able to provide professional learning and some additional support for our staff, um, we can now figure out how that, how to make it more, what's the word?
Put all the pieces.
Yeah, put all the pieces together and just make it more robust. That was the word I was looking for. Um, and so, the purpose of implementing the teaching and learning facilitator was to provide our classroom teachers, like I said in the beginning, with ongoing and frequent direct support to increase teacher efficacy. And so it's not saying, okay, here's your, here's this professional learning, now go back in your rooms and figure out how it works. It's, here's your professional learning, here's what it looks like in your classroom, I'm going to come and model it, and then I'm going to come in and coach you as you're doing it. And so to make sure that it's more effective across the board.
Katie, let me say something about that, too.
Yeah.
Um, as we know, the principals in our buildings are instructional leaders. But what we were finding was, with all the things that principals have to do, being able to focus on helping individual teachers throughout their buildings was real difficult and tall order. Um, so, we, we took some really talented teachers and put them in positions in, in our elementary and middle schools to provide that intensive instruction for teachers in those buildings. For example, if a teacher says, "I'm struggling with this," then the, the ITF's going to go in there and provide them those resources. This is providing us the financing behind those positions to, to further train and provide additional resources.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, we had, throughout the request for proposal process that we had to submit for our proposal, we identified a theory of action. And so, as a result of intentional teaching and learning support, teachers implement highly effective instructional strategies to ensure student content mastery and preparation for future pathways and to become the best version of themselves. So, that's kind of what we came up with as our theory of action for the teaching and learning facilitator and the advanced teaching roles proposal. So, why do we need TLFs? Why was this such a passion? This was a passion project for me, really, because I think that we have a lot of really great teachers that go to a lot of professional learnings, but then being able to apply it into their day-to-day is really hard. Um, and so this is something that we have embedded coaching, and if you look at this, like, on the left-hand side, it's teacher knowledge, teacher skill, teacher practice. And then on the top, so training on theory. So, you go to a professional learning, and the amount of carryover into a classroom is about 10% with teacher knowledge. Zero, 5% for teacher skill and 0% for teacher practice, which means they're not putting it into practice. They're going to professional learning, it's great, but then how do they, what do they bring back? Then if you add modeling, so you have the training and a modeling, you have, now, teacher knowledge goes up to 60%, which is great. And then their teacher skill, it's 60%, which is great because it went from five. And then teacher practice, you went from zero to 5%, which is, okay, so you have some more knowledge and skill, but you really don't have a lot of practice. Well, then if you have ongoing coaching, in addition to the modeling and training, it goes up to 95% across the board. And so that's what we are trying to really embed in our schools, is this idea of, you're always, you're always going to need learning, and you're always going to be, you're a lifelong learner, and everybody needs a coach. Because you have a coach does not mean you're bad. It means that even our professional football players have coaches, right? And so trying to really build that momentum, that this is something to improve your craft, and this is your career, and how do we build you up to be the best that you can be? So, that's how they all kind of weave together. Um, and so, it's exciting. We're really excited about the grant, um, because, you know, you apply for it, and then you find out six months later if you get it or not. And, um, so that was, it was a blessing. And when we found out the funding, it was exciting that we were funded at 80% because now we can do a lot with that, and, um, we're excited for the future for Dare County Schools. So, I appreciate you guys, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I got one. How many current of these, uh, learning facilitators do we have in the schools?
So, we have one in each of our elementary and middle schools.
Okay. Why not the high schools?
Because, so, we intentionally went with elementary and middle only because we learned through, um, number one, funding. That's the big piece there. But number two, that we wanted to try it, well, not trial it, but really pilot it in elementary and middle. And the hope is that we can eventually get up to the high school, but the elementary and middle were the natural starts, you know, to get that, you know, traction. Yep.
But the goal was to get in all schools?
Eventually, yes. That's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, but, also, we have the, um, instructional technology facilitators, ITFs, that work, um, in this, in the second, in the secondary schools, so middle and high schools. And they serve, we actually loop them into a lot of our TLF trainings because they are a coach in a sort. Um, and so they do work at the high schools with some staff members. That was a good question.
Any other questions from Ms. Spruill? Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Glad to hear this. Good job, Katie.
Thank you.
Next, we'll turn it over to Mr. Dwightford. Spencer is stepping in for us tonight for First Flight High School. Thanks, Spencer.
Good evening. I'm Spencer Dwightford, and I'm here to read you the district highlights for the beach schools. Kitty Hawk Elementary School students received recently celebrated Read Across America Day with a special visit from the First Flight High School basketball team. This team included some of KHES's alumni. These students took the time to read to our students. Our school is also enjoying a shared reading experience with the book, The Wild Robot. Additionally, our school's PTO provided a fun and educational nature-out-loud assembly for our kindergarten and first grade students. Meanwhile, this year's KHES Drama Club has begun rehearsals for their rock and roll program under the direct, the, the direction of Mrs. Eileen. We would like to extend a special invitation to the Board of Education members to visit Kitty Hawk Elementary School this Thursday, March 13th, to help judge our leprechaun traps in the media center during the school day. We also invite you to attend our second-grade wax museum on March 20th from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. We appreciate your support and hope to see you at these upcoming events. Next up, First Flight Elementary School. February was a month filled with collaboration and data analysis, all aimed at fostering the growth of both students and staff. From February 4th to 6th, we held our middle-of-year Data Days, an exciting opportunity for all grade-level teachers to have dedication, dedication time with sub-coverage to collaborate with support staff, administration, and EC teachers. Together, we analyzed student growth and planned next steps to ensure continued progress for each student. Through this collaboration, we developed targeted intervention and enrichment strategies, embraced an all-ends-on-deck approach to personalized instruction. A huge thank you to our incredible instructional assistants, whose hard work and dedication have strengthened our flyer time and enhanced our UFLI intervention program, supporting students phonics development, developmenting, and overall success. We are also incredibly proud, proud of our staff and recognize the crucial role that collaboration and leverage, our collective strengths play in supporting the growth of all students at FFES. Together, we are making a meaningful impact and fostering a strong foundation for success. Next up, First Flight Middle School. The month of February includes a lot of celebrations at First Flight Middle School. We love our bus drivers and monitors, so we share the love by giving them a little treat each day for a week. We had two teams head to Raleigh for the Odyssey of the Mind. One team earned third place and is heading to the States. Our AIG coordinator, Ms. Nguyen, has organized bimonthly lunch and learns for our AIG students that starts this month. Our first meeting was spent socializing and sharing topics of importance to them. Our National Junior Honor Society members traveled to First Flight Elementary School to make valentines with the kids in the after-school program, and our eighth-grade ELA students visited First Flight Elementary School for Read Across America Week to read to kids in pre-K through second grade. Lastly, we sent our core students to MPA this week, and they earned a superior rating for their performances. Way to go Seahawks. Lastly, First Flight High School. FFHS has had an exciting few weeks. Our CTE students did an amazing job representing us at the Skills USA competitions in Greenville, and our finance department, led by Mrs. Monica Penn, is gearing up for The Addams Family Musical on March 13th through 15th. The National Honor Society, along with Mr. Steve Hamp, hosted a successful pancake dinner, and the VW, the VFW recognized several students for their Voice of Democracy essays. A special shout-out to Kira Cox for making it to the state level. In athletics, we celebrate big wins. Morgan Miller won the state title in the, in the two-mile indoor track event. Skylar Simpson became a state champion in girls wrestling. Our swim team won regionals, wrestling finished as a regional runner-up. Girls basketball won the conference tournaments, and boys' basketball tied for the regular season championship, making it to the third round of state playoffs. Looking ahead, juniors will take the ACT on March 11th, and our course fair is on March 12th. Thank you for your support. Go Nighthawks.
Good evening, Board. I'm Tobias Fleckenstein. I'm going to be reading the highlights from the Manio Schools and Nagseth Elementary. Last week, Nagseth Elementary students, staff members, and families came together for Read Across America Week. They hosted mystery readers on Monday, dressed for spirit week, week each day with a reading theme, spent time dropping everything and reading great books, and celebrated their One School, One Author event. Nagseth Elementary decided to try something new this year. Their school decided on an author, Roald Dahl, and they let the grade levels decide which book they would like to enjoy. The books came to life at Nagseth Elementary. Their building was decorated last Thursday, March 6th, with everything by Roald Dahl. They also hosted a book tasting event in which families could sample actual food items from the books. They had steam challenges and literacy scooter races for students in the gym. The book fair was in the whole, was in the building the whole week, and students enjoyed browsing and buying books. Nagseth Elementary School had another record turnout for their event. They had, they had the absolute best time. They cannot wait until next year. Fourth graders will also be hosting their wax museum this Wednesday, March 12th. So, stop in that night from 6:00 to 6:30 PM to see their students transform into their research project. Way to go, fourth grade. There is much more in store for Nagseth Elementary, so stay tuned for more information coming soon. Next up is Manio Elementary. Manio Elementary School is all set to rise up during the month of March. They already had a great turnout for Read Across America with community leaders coming in to read to their classrooms every day, as well as Manio Middle School students joining in on Friday. The love of reading and the focus on literacy has not paused one bit this month. But before we get into this month's activities, they would like to thank all of the fourth grade teachers, parents, and stakeholders for making the fourth-grade Wax Museum such a successful event. Additionally, this year, they've kicked off a, uh, they've kicked off March with a special challenge. The March Madness Reading Challenge has truly been a hit. As of Monday, March 10th, students have read, listened to an audiobook, or been read to for over one, sorry, ele, eleven thousand three hundred minutes. It's a lot of minutes. This challenge has been greatly received, and students send us vocabulary words that they don't know or don't understand. They have turned the breezeway into the buzzer beater board, where daily updates with vocabulary words, definitions, and example sentences are posted. So far, they've added 119. Now, in order to keep up with the celebrations surrounding reading, they have a big surprise in store for students this Thursday morning as they reveal something brand-new for all the students to engage with, to only add to their passion for literacy. Also, they've kicked off their Read Allowed mentoring program this month, where Manio High School avid students are engaging with, uh, Manio Elementary students with the Real Program to enhance and foster the love of reading while also encouraging positive mentorship. Last but not least, their student, their after-school enrichment clubs have really been taking off. Their music and theater club was able to visit the Hurrah Players in Norfolk to help them gain insight into what performance from start to finish looks like, and their art club and book club have been well-attended by students. Next is Manio Middle School. Ms. Gallup's STEM classes have partnered with Mr. Glenn Bradley to build a 16-foot skiff. Preparation began this week as they started drawing blueprints. Manio Middle School's Safe Promise Club spread the word about the importance of see something, say something during this week's lunches. They have also organized a spirit day, wearing green for unity. Manio Middle School Student Government Association hosted a successful school dance with over 200 students in attendance. CDC Coordinator Kelsey Oglesby organized a successful Fall in Love with Your Future Career Fair. Students walked around in a speed-dating fashion and met with successful Dare County business owners to learn more about careers. Manio Middle School Northeast Science Fair winners Hannah Labrada, Lily Tong, George Perro, Ben Zadd, and Anaya Gibbs will go on to compete in the state competition. Finally, National Junior Honor Society students joined Manio Elementary School to read to elementary students for Read Across America Day. Last up is Manio High School. Spring sports are now in full swing at Manio High School. Also, our avid seniors had a successful trip. The Manio DECA chapter attended their first state competition last week in Greensboro. There were 6,000 students from around the state who participated in it, and it was an excellent event for our students to be involved in. At the regional level, 10 out of 12 students were recognized for their proficiency in testing in the role-playing events. Also, the National Honor Society will host its second blood drive of the year on March 12th. Sophomores and juniors will take the pre-ACT and ACT on March 17th, and our career fair will take place on March 2nd from 9:30 to 11:30. And lastly, we look forward to our spring musical, The Lightning Thief, on April 3rd through the 5th.
Hello, I'm Caroline Fuller from Cape Hatteras Secondary School. To start off, Cape Hatteras Elementary School's math committee recently organized an innovative Math Night event at four local grocery stores across the island. Thank you to Red and White in Hatteras Village, Frisco Shopping Center in Frisco, Connor's Supermarket in Buxton, and Food Lion in Avon. This engaging activity challenged students to apply mathematical skills in a real-world setting. Participants were tasked with selecting grocery store items to prepare a family dinner while adhering to a set budget. By navigating the aisles and calculating costs, students developed essential problem-solving skills and learned the value of budgeting. This event not only enhanced their mathematical understanding, but also fostered practical life skills, making math more accessible and enjoyable. Cape Hatteras Secondary School has been extremely busy over the last several weeks. Our DECA students traveled to Greensboro for the DECA Conference, where they competed against 6,000 students in various categories, all achieving proficiency ratings in their tested areas. Emma Riggs and Kristen Bennett competed in the community giving category with their project Coastal Care Packs for Foster Children, earning fifth place in the state. The National Honor Society hosted a blood drive, and we did achieve our goal. And our spring sports teams all started their first games last week, so more, many more to come. Additionally, our science Olympiad teams traveled to Greenville to compete against 20 other teams in each category. All of our students were extremely successful, but the following students received first-place only traveling to NC State for the state competition. First place in disease detectives is Riley Oberbeck and Becca Fitch.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
And first place in electric vehicle is Sophia Bills and Jack Fuller.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Finally, CHSS will be hosting our career fair on March 20th.
Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bright.
Our musical production of Big Fish is scheduled for April 11th through April 13th.
Any further discussions on that? All in favor, say aye.
We are looking forward to another great month.
Any nays? Aye, Carrie. So, we have a consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I just had one clerical error.
Thank you.
I would like to thank our student advisories for their updates.
I think the, the day two of the retreat was February 14th, so if we could get that changed.
It really is very helpful. At this time, we're going to take a short recess.
It says February 13th for the days, yeah. So, I think, got it. Thank you, Georgia.
Thank you. Next, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bassini for reports and items of information.
Thank you, sir. Got several for you tonight, Board. First of all, the College of the Albemarle held their annual college and career promise meeting that we have every year in, in the spring in Elizabeth City. Each year, the College of the Albemarle holds a meeting of all districts that it serves on the campus in Elizabeth City to look at how it is serving the districts and where their campuses are. This year, there were several awards given out in two categories, and our Dare County School staff was very well-represented. Under the Spotlight Honors Award category... At this time, we're going to take a short recess. I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bright. Any further discussions on that? All in favor, say aye. Any nays? Aye, carry. So we have a consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I just had one clerical error. I think the, the day two of the retreat was February 14th. So if we could get that changed. It says February 13th for the days. Yeah. So I think, got it. Thank you, Georgia.
Thank you. Next, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bassnight for reports and items of information.
Thank you, sir. Got several for you tonight, Board. First of all, the College of the Albemarle held their annual college and career promise meeting that we have every year in, in, in the spring in Elizabeth City. Each year, the College of the Albemarle holds a meeting of all districts that it serves on the campus in Elizabeth City to look at how it is serving the districts and where their campuses are. This year, there were several awards given out in two categories, and our Dare County School staff was very well represented. Under the Spotlight Honors Award category, Mistress Scott Stokel, academic and financial advisor at COA in Dare and Manio High School were named as the Most Dynamic Duo. For Innovation in College and Career Promise, Ms. Carla Jarvis at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. For the Leadership Legacy Award, Ms. Denise Fallon, Dare County Schools Director of Secondary Instruction, was named that award. And the Best College and Career Promise Cheerleader was Mr. John Hunting, the Dare County Schools College of the Albemarle Dare Campus Liaison, who also sat on a panel concerning dual enrollment. In the second category, the High Impact Award, First Flight High School was named the Rising Star School. Secondly, I'd like to notify the Board that I have received a request from the 2025 Piedmont Triad Educational Consortium Auxiliary Services Conference to attend that conference on April 10th in Greensboro. The conference is for public school leaders in the areas of facilities, maintenance, nutrition services, and transportation. The request they made is a result of the devastation out west from Hurricane Helene last fall and my background of dealing with disaster recovery. They've asked me to sit on a panel discussion on disaster recovery. It's been a rough couple of weeks in Dare County Schools with several of our staff members losing family members. Last weekend, Dare County Schools lost a longtime member of our staff who worked in multiple positions and locations throughout our district, Ms. Becky Bowman. Like I and so many others know, losing a parent is hard. It's an extremely tough time for family and for friends. Over the last week, I've gotten to talk to Ms. Becky's daughter, Megan, who happens to be a former student and who Ashley and I coached at Manio High School on the tennis team. I think Megan's watching our meeting tonight. Megan, I'm sorry. There's a lot of people in Dare County Schools who loved your mom very much and who are hurting right along with you. I wish it was something I could say to take away some of the pain from you and her friends, but I can't because I don't know what those words are. But I'll say this. A lot of us have lost close family members. And I know when I lost my mom and dad, there's several things that have helped. One of those is lean on your memories and smile every time you remember them. Don't think you're crazy when you think you hear her voice. If you see a cardinal, you probably see a lot of them. You don't have to be so tough for everybody else. Sometimes you just need to cry, but know that she would tell you not to. There's this song that I heard right after my parents passed. It's called Scars in Heaven. I've listened to it a lot. And it's, it's got me through a lot of tough moments, times, but it makes me cry every time. And I'll say this to you. It hurts so bad because she was loved so much. And don't forget that. I would like to say to all of our Dare County Schools families who have lost someone recently, God bless you and your families. I'd like to share that there's a celebration of life for Ms. Becky this coming Saturday at St. Andrew's Church in Nagseth from 2:00 to 4:00. Everyone's invited. And Meg, I look forward to seeing you and your family, and I look forward to meeting your son. And if you need anything, don't hesitate to reach out. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I would like to take a moment. Man, this is a tough night. I'd like to take a moment to, um, talk about one of the items that was on the consent agenda. Mr. Steve Blackstock and I have worked together on and off for the last 20 years. Steve has served as a math teacher, a bus, I'm going to probably leave something out, a bus driver, a middle school assistant basketball coach. He's worked in the child nutrition department. He's been a principal, director of instruction, director of testing, director of career and technical education programs, an interim superintendent, interim finance director, and one heck of an assistant superintendent. Steve and I first worked together at First Flight Middle School when I first went into administration and he was still in the classroom, driving a bus and coaching. We would eventually both take principals' roles in Currytuck County. Steve left me in Currytuck. I have often thanked him for leaving so I could get the Principal of the Year honor. And he came back to be a principal at Manio Elementary School. When I became Superintendent Hyde, I came and asked him to come help me. I didn't tell him immediately that the position I was asking him to take was the Director of K-12 Instruction, Testing and Accountability, and Career and Technical Education all rolled into one. But when I did tell him what the position was, he turned the job down. Luckily, he called me back a few days later and asked me if the position was still available. There were days on our drives around Hyde County that we would talk about what if we ever got a chance to do this in Dare? What would we do differently? What would we do first? And then I retired and left Stephen Hyde. Being completely honest, when I heard he had accepted the interim superintendent's position in Dare, it had some effect on my decision to try to apply. We are complete opposites. And we come at issues from polar opposite directions. But we were both always willing to listen to the other side and respect that perspective. I want to say thank you to my colleague, my partner, and my friend for being willing to stand beside me when sometimes it felt like we're the only two standing. For talking me down off the ledge more times than I can count. For matching my effort, desire, and love for Dare County Schools. And for all that, my utmost gratitude and respect. In spite of every reason I could possibly come up with to change his mind, I respect his decision. And in Steve's own words, "I'd rather go before people think I should go." Tonight, the Board has accepted Mr. Blackstock's letter of retirement effective July 1, 2025. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all my night spots.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Next, we'll go to unfinished business and have our interim director, finance officer, Mr. Rashad Daniels come forward to talk about our proposed budget 2526.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board. We're all going to sort of tag team on this for a few minutes. We thought it would be good to start off with Dare County Schools' funding breakdown. This has been a, this question that's come up several times and wanted to address that. As you can see, 51% of our budget is state funding. 45%, 45.5% of our budget is local funding, and 3.4% of our total budget is federal funding. That's a topic that's come up several times. There's some concerns about the Department of Education at federal level, and there's also been concerns about some of the grants that have pulled back from the Department of Education. I want to touch on that before we go much further. The grants that we primarily receive in Dare County are what's called pass-through grants. That means we don't, like many of the districts in North Carolina, we don't get direct federal funding in our district. We get funding from the federal government that goes to DPI, and DPI provides that with that funding to Dare County. So it passes through DPI. Up to this point, what has come out of the Department of Education in any cancellation of grant funding has been the direct grants that go from the federal government to districts. Grants that get small school grants, rural school grants, things like that. Because, as you can see in this slide, only 3% of our budget is federally funded, that doesn't mean we may or may not lose any funding. What that means is the impact of that funding will probably be less on us than it's going to be on some of the districts who get massive amounts of federal funding in North Carolina. Our, our position breakdown for funding is very similar. 57% of those positions are state-funded, 38% are locally funded, and only 3.6% of those positions are federally funded. As you can see by this, the vast majority of funding in Dare County Schools goes to salaries and benefits for our employees. 88%. That's hiring the best teachers to put them in the class to give our students the best education that they can get. 8, 8.5% is system-wide support services, and then a very small percentage is for instructional services. And I want to turn it over to Rashad.
I thought it was important just for the Board and, I'm sorry, there we go. For the Board and members to see a four-year trend of the average daily membership for Dare County Schools. As you can see, the trend has been going on a downward spiral for our average daily membership, which means we are losing students. But if you look at the retirement and the hospitalization, even though we're losing students, our expenses continue to incur. When we lose students, we also lose funding because a lot of funding with the state and federal formulas are based on average daily membership. So as we lose that funding and the expenses go up, we have to get that funding from elsewhere, which is why we work with the county commissioners to try to increase our county funding to provide and to continue to support our staff and our services that we provide in Dare County Schools.
Mrs.? I, I asked if she was going to stay. As you can see on this slide, there are, we've listed the things that we're asking our county commissioners for increases in this year. If you remember, and it was mentioned a while ago in public comment, we went to the commissioners last year and requested about $5 million to increase teaching supplements for our classified and certified teachers. We received $1.6 million from the county commissioners for those increases, which was fantastic. It allowed us to increase our teacher supplement by $2,000 a year for each of our teachers and our classified supplement, $1,000 a year for each of our classified employees. This year, and as I told the commissioners last year, we appreciate that support very much, and, and I'll be back. And so this year, we're going to go back. We're, we're asking for roughly $726,238 to increase our certified supplement and $269,928 to increase our classified supplement. That works out to about half of what we got last year. So our approximation is we would be able to increase our teaching supplement by another $1,000 and our classified supplement by another $500. Instead of trying to do this in massively large chunks, we, we figure we'd, you know, get the elephant, eat the elephant by just taking smaller bites. Also, in that funding, we're requesting an additional $103,834, which will allow us to increase our coaching supplements by about 20%. Last year, we realigned those supplements, and there was an increase last year in our coaching supplements and in the way we set it up. This year, we would like to increase those a match by about another 20%. The second line on this page is an administrator's position. Sure covered all that. We would like to create a position for a building-level administrator to work at the district level to support district-wide initiatives. This position would work with the district in building data analysis, the education educator value-added assessment system, school improvement planning, the Drivers Ed program, our Avid programs district-wide, district scholarships, governor's school selections, principal interns, our AIG program, field trip approvals, observation support, and represent the district within, within our region. We see this as a great opportunity to strengthen our building-level leadership throughout the district while providing growth opportunities and experience for our existing administrators. And finally, the last thing on, uh, sorry, there's two things on, two additional things on that page. Under section two, you see there's $45,503. Let me go back to that so you can see the numbers. There you go. $45,503. That is a request that the commissioners use our pre-K student enrollment in our funding formula. Currently, our pre-K students, which are in all of our elementary buildings, are not a factor in our funding formula. And we're just requesting that those students become part of that, that overall funding formula. And that, that increase would be $45,000. And then finally, the last thing on that page is building and grounds, and we listed $300,000 in that. Here's what we're proposing. Instead of Dare County contracting for their building and grounds to be taken care of, and then Dare County Schools paying employees to do the exact same thing, our proposal is that the county and the schools go together and contract to have all of our building, buildings and grounds maintained by an outside entity. As you know, the school system doesn't have funding. We get all of our funding from the commissioners. So we can't really pay the commissioners to do that. So we have to request the funding from the commissioners in order to contribute to that fund. It's our belief that if we contract with somebody to do all of it, it's got to be cheaper than contracting to do one or two of those throughout the district. So we're proposing to the county that, that we partner with that request. And I see federal state funding, carry.
Well, so I'm just going to go through a summary of some of the stuff we worked through when the Board had their Board Workshop back in February 25th. And I just wanted to kind of break down again, the funding that we receive, of course, is the county funding, but we also receive state funding and the pass-through grants for federal funding. Most of those funding formulas are going to be based on our average daily membership as well as things such as county tax value, class, class size, and poverty level. And so they look at that when they're funding us, and they give us allotments based on that in different program report codes, which are going to be PRCs, which is how we fund and work through our expenditures. They're all going to be. They're all going to be aligned by PRC, which has specific guidelines and can only be used for what is intended for that purpose. So we can't move them out or intermingle them with other PRC funds. We have to use them specifically for that fund. And as you can see on this slide here, we're projecting that our average daily membership for the '25-'26 school year will decrease to 4817. That's going to be about a 3% decrease in ADM, which means about approximately a 3% decrease in funding. Not in every PRC, because again, some PRCs may be based on poverty level and class size. But across the board, you can pretty much guarantee there'll be similar effects towards the funding. As we don't have any current state-provided formula components to project, we have based that off of a three-year projection and kind of tried to determine what the state may provide for the retirement rate and the health insurance increase so that we were able to put together a budget and propose the salary increases. So as you can see there, we have our average daily membership, again, is going to be 4817. The retirement rate is 24.52% is what we're projecting. Health insurance, about $8,500. FICA historically has not changed. That will usually continue to be 7.65%. And this consumer price index that we're using is about 2.8%, which we're going by the CPI Southern Region Urban Index. Again, these are projections that we have projected based on historical data. So these most likely will change, and they'll look a little different. But this is our best estimate of what they may look like for this school year coming. Another important thing is that we put the employer costs in perspective. Our average teacher salary in Derrick County is about $55,175. Now, that's going to be just their base salary. Then we also have to add into the local supplement, which again, we increased by $2,000 last year, and that average is going to be about $6,648. When you factor in those two amounts, you add them together. You also have to then do a retirement matching. So retirement of the 24.52% would be calculated on both the local supplement and the teacher's salary, as well as the FICA matching of 7.65%. And the employer cost for health insurance for our members that are on our health plan is going to be employer matching cost of about $8,500 for a total employee cost to the employer of Derrick County Schools of $90,211.
That $55,000 goes up quick.
Yes. As Mr. Sebastian had mentioned previously, we don't, we're not a taxing authority. So Derrick County Schools doesn't generate our own revenue. We rely on the state and federal government as well as the county. These functions here, maintenance, utilities, professional development for staff, building liability and insurances, and athletics are not funded in any way by the state or federal government, which means all of that funding comes from the county, and we have to divvy it out between the departments to make sure that we cover our costs for support of the system and the county Derrick County Schools overhead. So I'm just going to break down just a few slides. I know, again, on the board workshop, we went kind of through it, PRC by PRC. But I just want to highlight a few of the PRCs, which are going to be our largest, one being classroom teachers. That is going to be for the majority. Most of our classroom teachers are going to be in program report 001. And we have locally about 110 positions, and for state positions, we have about 182. This is going to be our largest budgeted item at 34% for over $26 million. So that $26 million is going to be about a third of our budget there just for classroom teachers. Again, that's for our typical classroom teachers. That does not include teachers that may teach especially or teach exceptional children's. They can be included here, but they can also be included in other program report codes. And classroom teachers are, they're a little different. They're not funded based on a dollar amount. The state funds those based on positions. What that means is instead of the state saying we're going to give you $6 million for these positions, they're going to, they say we'll give you 180 positions. And whatever the cost of those positions are, we're going to cover that. And so what we, what you try to do is we try to put our larger-paid teachers in those positions, which in Derrick County Schools, we have quite a high amount of max-scale teachers, which means most of our teachers that are on the higher paid end are going to be in that PRC 001 on the state level. And then the ones that are newer on the lower end of the scale are most likely going to be on the local end in our local positions, which are funded based on dollar amounts. The next slide is central office administration. This includes all of our central services. And as you can see, it's about 2.5% of our budget for about $1.9 million. And that's going to be based on just dollars. So whatever the dollar amount that's funded by the state, that will be covered in there. And anything additional that's not covered by the state is supplemented by the local county funding. The next biggest PRC is going to be our PRC 003, which is our non-instructional support. That's going to be our classified staff, such as our front desk people, our treasurers, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff. All of the support services that go into making a school function is going to be included in PRC 003. We receive funding from the state for that of about $1.5 million. But as you can see, we also supplement locally for about $6.1 million to be able to provide staffing for our buildings for the instructional support. Next, PRC is going to be PRC 032, which is our children with special needs. That's going to be about 7.6% of our budget. That can fluctuate because the state says that we have to provide certain services to exceptional children. But they cap the funding based on 13% of our average daily membership. Currently, Derrick County Schools is about 16%. So anything over the cap of the state funding has to be provided locally. So we have to provide their services, and we have to supplement them locally from local dollars through our county funding formula. As you can see, about $4 million we get from the state, and then we put an additional $1.8 million to the budget. The next slide is charter schools. So charter schools by general statute are funded from the state, directly from the state. But they also are entitled to a portion of our county funding and our local revenues. So we have to facilitate our local revenue amount given that to the charter schools and students that are in charter schools based on the per pupil amount. Last year, we had about 14 students in charter schools. That has increased this year to about 20 students. And that can be students from physical charter schools or online charter schools such as North Carolina Virtual Academy. So as that continues to increase, that funding gets taken from our budget, and we have to facilitate that and send it to the charter schools. So that's not an amount that we can include in the needs for Derrick County students because that's money that is essentially just passing through. As we mentioned before, the North Carolina pre-kindergarten, pre-K program doesn't, it's not funded based on our funding formula, although we do put local funds to that. When we are looking at our budget, the state provides a state grant of about $780,000. And then we supplement that to provide needs for those students of about $400,000 projected for the current coming year. And that's going to be about 1.5% of our operating budget.
The slide you're looking at right now is our capital outlay. This is, these are the requests that we have from schools that the principals and the school improvement team sit down with their staff. They compile the requests. They prioritize those requests, and they send them to us. This year, we had about $3.1 million in requests from schools for a total of $613,000 that we had to spend. And this is the breakdown of those capital outlay requests. Let me get to these colors so I can see them here. One of the requests, and this is sort of, you have to take this off the top. We try to replace a bus on our rotation schedule so we don't have to replace more than one at a time. Of that, $613,000. If you see that yellow piece of pie, that's about $159,000 for a bus. So that comes out of the $613,000 that we have to spend on capital outlay projects.
Yep, that's for the, the state covers for the yellow buses, but we do have to pay for our activity buses. So that yellow portion is going to be for an activity bus to cover the rotation, to provide a new bus for athletics and our student trips.
And looking at that number, as you see up here, the capital outlay amount last year is $613,000. The $940,000 that you're looking at is including the $300,000 that we're proposing that we get from the county to use for building and grounds. Now, there's several areas that that ways that that would help us out. In some of these capital outlay requests, and if you look at the green piece of pie, the 31.9%, that includes maintenance, which involves, sorry, which involves buying tractors, buying lawn mowers, having staff to go out and take care of those things. If we're able to work it out with the county where we can contract that, then that frees up some of that money to become available to use with some of our other requests. Anything else on there that? Well, school requests. So the piece of the pie that's sticking out, the 21.9%, that's the amount of the $600,000 that's left to meet the school requests. Right, it's my favorite part of the budget. So like we've talked about years before, it's a five-year capital improvement plan. Next year is the one we're trying to set in stone. And as you remember last year, as you can see that it shifts. And the following years are ideas or how we're looking forward, what we'd like to do. But that can change depending on what happens during the current year. If you see the items in the gold, those are things that I changed from the capital improvement plan from last year. I'll just move a few things around. Who's that? First Flight High School, so what that is?
Yes.
Field irrigation.
Oh, yes, cut off.
That's for baseball and softball because they're on very iron-heavy wells, and we can upgrade that system to a freshwater system and get rid of the failing, the costly failing irrigation parts. The next one is two heat pumps that need to be replaced. I was able to shift First Flight Middle School repaving forward a few years. And that comes into effect later on. We see some of the repair, renovation lottery funds that we would like to use. Also, gym floor for First Flight Middle School getting moved forward to '27-'28. So yeah, the bright yellow items are the items we'd like to put on the lottery fund that we've talked about is the repair and renovation lottery fund provided by the state. But those are items that can only, money can only be spent for repair and renovation. So I had to find things that qualified for that and move other things that didn't technically qualify. We could move forward into the capital improvement plan. So there we have the Manuel High School fire alarm system replaced. Cape Hatteras Secondary School's auditorium seating. And that is a rough budget number with a kind of move-up in timeline. Still waiting on a finalized number for that. Again, the fire alarm system there, as well as... Sorry, next slide. Yep. Hatters Elementary. Those three schools have probably the oldest fire alarm systems. So we're trying to get them in as soon as possible. Air handler replacement got pushed back. That's the central office one. Make room for doing things for the schools sooner than central office. And then the $25,000 for the city waterline extension. That is to provide the freshwater back to the fields along with some of the planned upgrades that may happen on Veterans Drive.
That takes our water source from the right by Veterans Drive all the way down to the football field in Veterans Drive. They're planning on doing some improvements in that area. And felt like that it was a good time to get that done. We talked to the county about it, and they said that our cost would be about $20-25,000 in order to make that happen. And the last one, the playground equipment. We've had requests from several elementary schools for help with their playground equipment. And we moved that up and increased that amount for the '26-'27 school year to try to provide some of that equip.
So the next slide is going to be the total proposed budget overview. At the top, you can see the operating budget, which is going to be most, again, of our instructional services, salaries for those, and system-wide support. We're projecting $76,926,547 for the operating budget, which is composed of state funding of about $39,268,903, local funding of $35,11381, and federal of $22,646,263. Our capital projects proposed budget is going to be about $3,794,500, which is composed of our capital improvement plan funding projected as $2.8 million and capital outlay of $940,500. Our enterprise budget, which is going to be our school nutrition and our after-school enrichment program, about $2,983,395,000 for a total budget of $83,704,442. And that is our '25-'26 proposed budget.
Let me say something about those first, the operating budget, because I think this is glaring, and people need to understand this. If you look at the state and the local numbers, they're pretty close together. The $39 million and the $35 million. That typically doesn't look that way because most districts have more than $2.6 million coming from the federal government, which enables the local government not to have to pay those funds in. That Derrick County just does not qualify for a lot of those federal funds. And we greatly appreciate that our commissioners support us and provide us with the funding to have the high-quality schools that we have. Question?
Anyone have any questions?
I got. Let's see if I can go in order here. I got a few. I noticed that you were talking about a third party for maintenance, buildings and grounds. Mr. Dean, you can weigh in on this one. How many, I saw athletic fields on there. How many of our current athletic fields are maintained by Derrick County Parks and Rec? Do you have any idea if any?
Hatters, Manuel, excuse me, Manuel Middle School, sometimes. Sometimes. First Flight Middle, some of First Flight Middle.
With the new fields.
No.
Okay, just out of, just for my knowledge.
It would be, it would be worth it for them, I mean, to, because they are involved in each of the regions of the county.
Okay. Number two, how many activity buses, or you say one a year we replace? Generally, roughly? And Mr. Twitty, you might be able to weigh in on this a little bit, too.
Yeah, we started this program eight and a half years ago where it was shared with us that the activity bus cost was going to keep growing and growing. And we're probably one of the few counties travels as much as we do with having the three high schools in a number of areas that we travel to. So instead of waiting one year to have three activity buses put in the budget, we started with this eight and a half years ago, say, one a year to keep up the rotation. And also to have us to have the flexibility of spare activity buses, which back in the day, that was never heard of. Because there's a lot of times that in the past that you get a call at 12 o'clock at night, and you're broke down. And if you're lucky, you're broke down in a specific city. But most time, you're broke down in Hurford County, and no one answers the phone. And then you have to go leave Derrick County to go take a bus, bring your children home. Because the last thing we need to do is have our children sitting on the side of the road on a broken-down bus.
Right.
And Mr. Babin, it's sort of deceiving at times because, you know, you think a high school and activity bus, the sheer number of teams that we have at each of our high schools that may all be leaving the same day to go to a meet or to compete. It's, you can't just have a activity bus.
Um, it's, you can't just have a activity bus.
Also, also like to reflect on, if you use a yellow school bus for a field trip in Dare County, the state, the Department of Public Instruction requires you to reimburse the mileage back to the state. That bus is only funded in the state of North Carolina's to and from school. Anything else, they call it extracurricular activities and the county has to pick up that tab for the use of that bus.
Last one, and Mr. Bassnight, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. I hope you don't mind.
Trying.
For those that may be listening or those that may go back and watch this meeting, I noticed in the CIP this year to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, my, my Manio brethren and sisters are pretty adamant about this field house at Manio High School. Now you've explained to me how this works. Would you, and I know you've said it a thousand times over, but would you do it a thousand and one?
Yes, sir, I will.
So that we can clear this up?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you.
The, the, the plans and we've met with the architects on the plans and they've done preliminary drawings on the restroom locker room facility for Manio High School. The county requested that we wait until we see what the final cost for the early college was to see how much of that money is still available to use for funding for the, um, the restroom locker room facility at Manio High School. We are waiting on a final number, on a bid number to be opened by the county for the early college building. And as soon as we have that number, we know exactly how much money we have to work with or if we have to get money from somewhere else to go ahead with that, the, the locker room, uh, facility at Manio High School. It is absolutely on go. It's just a matter of when we know where we've got the funding to do it. Um, and I've got the drawings in my office.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks for asking.
Anyone else?
Only thing I had, uh, on the school nutrition fund, there's no depreciation expense for this coming year listed. And there's no transfer from cap, from general funds. So I noticed a draft.
So the transfers you saw from general funds for this year was the, um, board approval of the forty-six thousand dollars for student meals for the one month that the county, um, as they, as we were working with the county to provide free meals for students.
And then there's no depreciation expense.
Depreciation expenses, um, we're still working on that. So that this, uh, is a preliminary, so that will be added later.
That's what I thought you might do. And then I just wanted to say, great job on the budget.
Oh, thank you.
All the presentations you've done. It sounds like you've been doing it your whole life. So good job.
Thank you.
It's nice to have the right people to write the seed.
Yep.
Mr. Bass, I have a couple of questions. The principal on loan position, explain that a little bit more.
It used to be something that Dare County did. Um, we had a position in central office that sort of act, it acted, um, in between building level administration and director level administration and supported the administrators, um, in, in our buildings. It is, it's typically an assistant principal or a principal that moves into that position. It's a growth position for, for allowing them to improve and grow and get a more, um, district view, um, of what goes on. It also allows us to take administrators that may, um, have come up at one grade level uh, and move them around to different grade levels and get them a wider view of, of building administration. Um, it's a, it's a win-win. It's a, it's to strengthen our administrators, um, and it also helps at central office.
Thank you. Second question, the, the pre-K added that to ADM. Is, is that something that's done throughout the state or is this something new?
What was, I'm sorry.
The ADM pre-K.
So the, most of pre-K is funded by a state, um, grant, which is submitted based on the reimbursement every, um, month. And they provide their services. What we're asking for is the local portion that we pay. Um, we currently take that from our county funding that we receive. We, those students aren't included in that formula when we calculate it for the funding. So we're asking that be included because we do provide local services to those students.
That's something on the county's heels.
Um, I would have to get back to you on that. I'll have to look and see if other counties.
I, I don't think most other counties have any, have the kind of formula that we have with Dare County based on ADM. So I think it's probably is not a, they probably don't because they just don't do it the way we do it.
Yeah, the, the, having the ability to use that funding formula to base our funding on. Uh, I know that we've been contacted, um, multiple times this spring already about counties that want to know about our funding formula. So, um, they probably have to go into the commissary and say, we want this amount of money for this as opposed to looking at ADM and factoring the, the finance, the support from that.
And that program also, um, gets charged for riding a school bus. Cause it's not in the, um, K through twelve program through the state of North Carolina use of school bus. So we have to reimburse the mileage back for those students riding that yellow bus.
And for those of you that don't know, um, pre-K is not, um, does not fall under the heading of the North Carolina Department of Public Construction. It actually falls under DHHS. So we, we have an entity in each of our elementary schools that is not governed by the Department of Public Construction. And it falls under an entirely different set of rules and regulations. That even means when we open a new pre, pre-K classroom, um, DHHS has to come in and inspect, inspect, the, the setup of the room, the temperature of the water, um, and they're the ones that have to sign off on that. So it's a totally se- separate set of rules, um, and different branch of government that that falls under.
How close are we to bids for early college? Should be, I believe they're doing this week.
Any other questions from any board member? Mr. Daniels, thank you and your team for an awesome job on presenting not only here tonight, but also at our budget workshop. Really does, it gives us a lot of information. And I also would like to remind everyone, um, that this presentation is, has been about a month and a half earlier than normal. And that was a request from the commissioners as they could go forward to work on their budget in a timely manner so they can have workshops to present to the county as well. So with that being said, is there a motion on the floor to adopt a proposed budget for the year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six that has been presented to us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the, um, the budget as presented by Mr. Daniels.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Rowler, second by Mr. Pang. Any further discussion? All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Aye, carries. Next we'll go into new business and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch.
We had some policies for you on first reading. I don't have that much to add to it. Everybody's got the information about it, but I'm happy to talk about it.
Mr. Brower, you want to comment as our chair?
Well, yeah, um, I, I did send the notes from the meeting, um, to everyone on the board. I, I believe y'all had a chance to look at it. I could go through those notes now. Or if it pleases the chairman, we could have a motion to include those notes in the minutes for today's meeting.
I'm, I'm working with you, buddy. What do you feel like? You want?
It's up to you.
Well, let's, let's make a motion just to approve, to have that approved into our, our meeting tonight.
That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a motion? Are you Mr. Brower?
Uh, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Second by Mr. Pang. Any further discussions on that matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Aye, carries. And I want to thank you, Mr. Brower and the, and the policy committee for the work that's, that puts into this. It really helps the board out.
I would add, um, yeah, that the, these policy meetings are open to the public and I have yet to see someone from the public show up at any of these meetings. But, you know, you can see how these policies get formulated. And, um, you know, uh, one other thing that is in the notes is our relationship with law enforcement, which is, uh, something that's been coming up quite a bit with the, uh, concern for ICE raids and whatnot. And we are moving ahead with the regulation based on the board attorney's, um, recommendation. And we should have a version of that ready for first reading, I would hope, uh, yeah, for the next meeting.
Thank you. I would have, right. Now we're going to go to the comments from the board members and Mr. Bright. I'll turn, let you be the first one tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to start off by, um, thanking our superintendent for continuing his education and, um, to bring more to Dare County and to, uh, to go present on behalf of what you've learned to help the other, um, districts in our state. I think that's a great thing. I've been really impressed with maintenance staff. I don't know if Ian's still here. Your guys are kicking it, man. If something comes up that's wrong, it is taken care of and we really appreciate your dedication to our school buildings and I'd like to say thank you for that. Um, Morgan Miller and Skylar Simpson, outstanding young ladies. I mean, keep up the strong work. Um, Beverly Hagie, I know her personally. She's a tremendous asset to our school systems and, um, I'd just like to say her name one more time. Uh, Mr. Blackstock's resignation is, uh, going to hurt. But, um, after the budget presentation, I feel like that we could probably put him in a principal on loan position after he retires and he could stay right here and keep.
Did not think. Point of order, that's not a.
And the last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is Rashad, thank you so much for your hard work. I know this is a complicated issue and it's not easy and you seem to really have a great handle on it and I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Mr. Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, that's why I like to give my shout-outs. I'm, we'll try not to be too long if I can help it, but, um, uh-huh, I knew that was coming. Uh, kind of to echo what Mr. Bassnight was saying earlier, uh, thoughts and prayers out to the lost faculty member and family members. Um, it's never easy, like you were talking about. That's tough stuff. Shout out to Mr. Blackstock. I didn't know if I was going to shout out to you tonight or not, but I mean, I haven't worked with you but for a few months, but, uh, one, one person that really speaks very highly of you is my old man. My daddy said, Blackstock, first class, super great guy. Listen to what he says. So that was something. Um, I want to shout out to Ms. Holly King. She was recently in Chicago, I believe, with the AI and Google. That was something that was super cool.
She's hiding behind that screen.
There she is. Okay, yeah.
There she is.
Um, spoke to her the other day and she kind of ran through some of it with me and I thought that was, that was really neat. That's, I mean, that's a high honor to be invited to be as part of such a spearheaded effort there. Thought that was super cool. Ms. Katie Spruon in the back, uh, you, you were, was it some superintendent class? What was that exactly? Is that, is that accurate? Is that an accurate statement?
She actually completes that program this week. Um, she'll graduate, um, Thursday. Um, it's the aspiring superintendent's program and it's sponsored by the North Carolina Superintendent's Association.
Very awesome. Good, good, store that away. Of course, you know, our state champions first flight high school, it's always super cool. Uh, but a few of us attended the Abbott event at Manio High School. That was, that was kind of opening for me because I was still kind of uncertain about some of it. So it helped me learn a little bit more. Uh, we had a board retreat earlier in February. Man, that was a blast. Hot diggity dog, did I have a good time. I don't know about y'all, but I had a great time. And I mean, it was just a way for us to kind of get away from everybody and just learn a little bit more about each other, learn some more policy-type things and learn some more procedures. And Ms. Rachel did a bang-up job, uh, laying it all out to us. So pointer sprue, still got the pen. It's some of, again.
You took a pen from pointer sprue?
It was given to me.
We've been looking everywhere for that, Mr. Rachel.
Uh, I bet you have. Uh, the Wax Museum at Manio Elementary School, if, if a few of us went to that, that was a good time and there was a lot of good exhibits and, uh, the kids worked really hard on that. And I mean, they were very professional about it too. When you pushed a little button, they would, hi, my name is so-and-so. I was born, it was a really neat thing. Couple of us did the D E F spelling bee. And two of the three of us decided we were going to, I, I wanted to wear the shirt, but we, let's see what, we were the, uh, hold it up for him, Mr. Brower. So you know, it's all about the riz these days. You hear these kids talking about their riz and their sigma riz. Well, we were the rizly bears. And we each wore that shirt that night. And I mean, the people thought it was great. And you talk about a fun time. I'm, I'm going to challenge the board next year to all participate in that. And, um, and see if we can kind of, you know, a little team against team type thing. That was, that was a good time.
What place did we come in?
Seventh out of, Ron and Matt came in seventh out of twenty-one. I'll just say it that way. Uh, I, I kind of, yeah, that's, it looks good. Turn it in. Um, real quick, a couple of high school students that I saw doing great things in the community. I want to shout out to Harley Scarborough and Landon Davenport of Wanches. They were, they saw a friend in need, in medical need. They sprung into action, made a phone call, called nine-one-one and was a, the nine-one-one operator talked them through how to assist their friend. This was, um, a few weeks ago on a Sunday afternoon. I just happened to notice what was, saw some police cars and I saw these boys and my first thought was, what'd they do? But no, they, they, Mr. Justin, we didn't do anything. And they explained to me everything. So I wanted to give them a quick little shout out. Um, and you high school students this kind of goes hand in hand with what I just said about Mr. Harley and Mr. Landon. You may not think people are looking at you, but they are. The adults are looking at you and that goes for all you that are, I mean, I have a 10-year-old and a four-year-old at home and, and last sat, or last Friday evening, my 10-year-old went up to a Landon Sawyer at Manio High School and was like, can I have your autograph on a baseball? And he kind of looked at me and, and then I, I mean, my son really wanted his autograph. Now Landon's not going into the major leagues. He's going into the coast guard actually, but, uh, it meant the world to my son. He come home that day and he said, Daddy, we need to find a case for this. So when, when I see stuff like that, I'm watching these young adults in our community and these, these kids at our high schools. And you just know that we're looking at you and the little ones are looking at you too. Okay. So y'all keep being those good role models for kids. And, and just know that it doesn't go unnoticed by us at the older level, I reckon. Um, and wrap this up, I want to shout out to Ms. Georgia. I'll tell you what, Ms. Georgia keeps me straight. I'll go into central office with a question. I'll sit down with her about the question. Thirty minutes later, we're laughing and cacking up about something. But we have a good time and I, I appreciate you in these first few months of trying to get used to things. You've really helped me out a ton and I appreciate the heck out of you. So I wanted to give you a little special shout out tonight. Uh, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bevan. Ms. Lloyd?
Well, it's been a, I won't go as long as Justin. I did that last time. But I did so many things. Again, I've had a great time. I was at the AVA showcase and I learned a lot about that and just seeing, uh, how professional the teachers and the principals and the assistant principal are that put that on for everyone to be a part of and to see other people come from other parts of the state and even from First Flight High School to come and observe and see the process was very interesting and fascinating to me. We, again, our retreat was wonderful. We learned a lot and well, one thing I took away from it was I get to work alongside some really wonderful professional people from different walks of life. Not everybody goes home and is retired. Some of us have jobs, full-time jobs that we still go and do. And so it, it was, uh, an eye-opening experience to, you know, kind of see everybody with their hair down, so to speak, but yet to get to know each other better. And of course, Rachel and the others that presented were amazing. They did a great job and just made it seamless. It was a great time. So I thoroughly enjoyed that. The Living Wax Museum at Manio Elementary, it was, it was a blast. I, I'm telling you, those kids and teachers put on a show. I, I enjoyed that probably the most out of everything because they were, they were very professional. They took it very seriously. But what impressed me was they knew their person that they were representing, whoever they had studied, whomever that character was. It was sports figures, singers, which, you know, I was iffy about those, but I look, cause I love history. So the historical characters, I went around to all of them because they were amazing. But the kids were amazing to watch how much work they put into that and their, just their energy and enthusiasm. Cause their little buttons were pushed a million times that evening and they just would spout it off each and every time. Um, I went to the Nagseth Elementary, one school, one author, and that was, that was truly a blast too. Another, of course, being a reader and having worked with special needs kids and reading, that was so much fun to watch and to see the kids and, and the work that they put in, you know, and of course, the author was one of my favorite childhood authors. So seeing those books and how the teachers came together and put even at the little kids' level, all the way to the upper grades. And, uh, I did not try the lickable wall of fruit because that kind of, and, and it was all paper, but that was an option, they said. And I'm like, yeah, I'll pass on that one, but.
You mean the snozberries didn't taste like snozberries?
You know, I don't know.
Just checking. I, I didn't know what it tasted like.
But it was, it was cute that, you know, and that kids were enthusiastic to show their parents and everyone there. So it, it really made the story come to life because you could see how they put that work into it and made that story come alive. Um, of course, we've had fun going to the schools and taking the teachers and the staff. Of course, we've had fun going to the schools and taking the teachers and the staff donuts and just being there to say good morning to them a couple of Fridays. That was a lot of fun too. And they genuinely appreciate it, I think. They are happy and surprised and, and Mr. Blackstock, you can't leave. But as we say in the coast guard and the military, fair winds and following seas.
Toast, we might.
I'm sorry, you can repeat it. I'm, well, you're, I'm sorry, we say that all the time, but it's, it, it will be, I got to know Mr. Blackstock a little bit better at the retreat and that was an enjoyable time. But, you know, he deserves retirement. So we'll, we will let him do this, but I like the idea of the principal on loan. I think that's a good idea. So we might just, I'm sorry, you may just have to accept that role. You're too good to let go. So thank you so much. Thank you student advisors too. You keep us in line with all the activities that are going on or what's happened.
Mr. Work.
Kind of took some of the wind out of my sails.
I'm sorry.
To leave it on a nautical term there. But anyway, it's, it's great to hear all the statewide recognition all our staff receives. The, um, TLF grant, that's really great. I know it takes a lot of work to put all that stuff together on top of all your other stuff. And I think when I first heard, my comment was, oh man, when I heard it, Blackstock was leaving. But, uh, we, anyway, still here for a couple more months, so that's great.
Yes. Mr. Brower?
Yeah, um, we're getting into the homestretch year, uh, for the school year. And I'd just like to, you know, advise our, our seniors that everything's really busy now. I know that, but it's over in a flash. And so please take the time to enjoy, you know, your final few months of school. Also, I'd like to call out the previous administration that we had here. It took two assistant superintendents to do the job, not nearly as well as Mr. Blackstock has done in, in my estimation. And Steve, I'm really, really happy for you and congratulations, but I'm also really going to miss you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Spencer?
I don't have much to say, but congratulations to all the students and staff recognized and congratulations, Mr. Blackstock on your retirement.
Okay, yes, definitely. Congratulations, Mr. Blackstock. That is such a big step and it's very exciting. I really liked hearing about the budget as, um, as well as public comment. It's exciting that the citizens guide has been released. And, um, yeah, congratulations to the First Flight athletes and just, just everyone. It sounds like a really good, exciting, fun meeting.
Mr. Blackstock, and I'm going to miss you. All right, you were there at elementary school. All through, all throughout my education, you've just been there and it's going to be totally different without you come June. So congrats on your retirement. Was it principal on loan? Take the offer.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Mr. Payne?
Every, no, thank you. Every meeting I finish with the Dare Guarantee and COA in this morning's paper. I want to read you something that, um, came out. Dr. Jack Bagwell, president, experienced a 14% increase in enrollment from fall 2023 to 24, largely attributed to the Dare Guarantee Scholarship Program. This initiative provides free education to Dare County residents and recently graduated high school students promoting workforce development, curriculum advancement. Seniors, it's a great opportunity to take advantage of CTE courses, college courses. And the fact that for almost a little over two years, I've been spouting that, I think it had a little something to do with this 14% increase. Dr. Bagwell probably would not agree, but, um, Living Museum was awesome. Those kids were, were amazing. You, you pushed their button and it, amazing. I mean, I was impressed. That was, that was a fun night. And Mr. Bassnight, I, I need to apologize to you. You called me, I had been sick. I had just woken up from a nap when you called me and you told me that Mr. Blackstock was retiring. And I, I said, what, what did you just say? I was in a little bit of a daze because it's like, no, he didn't just say that. You will be missed without question, but the principal on loan, no, there's a ground maintenance business waiting to happen that you can take over. That's got your name written all over it.
I was thinking about taking classes at COA.
I want to say something about this board. We don't show up just for one meeting a month. So I think some people think that. There's a lot that we do. We've had two board members tonight talk just a little bit about what they've done the past month. That's a little bit. I think most of us on average just want to, we will spend more, more than an hour a day doing this job. I know I do with all the emails, the phone calls, the policy updates, the emails that we get from the state and all these organizations. We have to read to keep updated on, on so many things. That's what I do every morning and, and I'm there for an hour. That's just doing that. So this board does a lot of work and we did get a pay increase, but it'll go back to, we're making pennies on the dollar. So I want to say hats off to our board for sure. There's a couple of y'all that are working full time. Got one guy running the business. So to be able to fit the amount of time in that you do, uh, to keep this school district moving in the direction it's going, which is forward. Hats off to everybody on this board. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Bassnight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to sort of follow what Mr. Payne said. We, I was able to meet, um, a week or so ago in Greensboro with all the community college presidents and superintendents. And there were probably over a hundred of us in the room together. So very productive meeting and, and, um, the information that was shared was fantastic. Jack was in attendance. I have been interviewed three times by the Nighthawk News in the past week. All different people, all different topics, um, but I thoroughly enjoy every one of those. Getting to, getting to talk to the kids in their element and share why and how we are doing, what we're doing. It is, is very rewarding every single time. I want to wish all of our juniors good luck on the ACT. Those are coming up. Some of them will take those tomorrow. I know I have one, um, that's a little stressed over. Manio Elementary School, uh, the Wax Museum was fantastic. Also got to go read to Ms. Marshall's class, um, on Read Across America Day. So that was a lot of fun. Nagshead Elementary and the One School, One Author, fantastic. MHS and the Avid National Demonstration School Day was fantastic. Manio Middle School and First Flight Middle Schools, early college interviews. Uh, the first part of those were last week. We've received 77 total applications, uh, for the early college, uh, from throughout the district. And the last thing is, um, to Suzanne Blackstock. I want to thank you, um, because you, you got involved in this job too, whether she wanted to or not, for letting us borrow him absolutely 24 hours a day. For the last three years. And I wish you both relaxation and enjoy your time together. And Steve, thank you. Oh yeah, he, he's got a weather meteorology job, no doubt about that.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. I want to start off by saying that it has been sad to hear Ms. Becky Bowman's passing. I as well have worked with Ms. Bowman. She's been a dedicated soul to Dare County schools, from First Flight Elementary to Nagshead Elementary. As we all know, the world is not simple, not easy. But we had things in the past where we needed monitors for our buses. We were out searching and who was the go-to person? Ms. Becky Bowman. And at a minute, you could call Ms. Bowman tonight or 5:30 in the morning and say, Becky, can you be at Kitty Hawk Elementary to ride this bus? Becky, can you be at Nagshead Elementary? Can you be at First Flight? And not one time, Becky said, no. Her heart and soul is in Dare County schools and she's done an awesome and outstanding job. So she will be missed. As what y'all seen here tonight, this is why we have our reduction low in Dare County schools. Everybody wants to come to work for us, which is a blessing. We have an amazing staff, amazing administration, wonderful kids. And you can see this is a family and a team. And what you come out with is great results, making it best for our students. And that's what we're here for. Mr. Blackstock, you on the other hand, I can't use the words right now, but I'll share with you afterwards. I met Mr. Blackstock in the early 2000s. There again, in my transportation world, as we are today, we were short of drivers. I was told that, go talk to Mr. Blackstock. He might be one that you'd like to talk about driving a bus. So I did, I had the pleasure of sitting down with Mr. Blackstock. We sat there for about an hour and first thing he came up, he said, you know what? I think I might do this because I won't have to go to any staff meetings after school. He said, and what I'll also do is I'll share with some other staff members here at First Light Middle School and talk about it. Well, as his background in math, not only that he realized he didn't have to worry about going to after school staff meetings, he realized it helped his retirement program. The money that put him for driving the school bus out of state funds assisted him in his financial in the future. And he did bring other teachers on board. Thank you for that as well. It also hurt when Blackstock left us to go to Curry Tuck. When he, when he left, I thought, we lost a great man. And when we were notified that Mr. Blackstock was coming to be a leader of Manio Elementary School, not only I, but the whole county was all in awe. They were so blessed to have him back, to see his work level and ethic and knowledge and wanted to be parted back. He left Dare County schools, but his heart never did. And it showed, Steve. Working at Manio Elementary School, bringing him back was awesome. Thank you. Now, when you shared with us that you were going to hide, that was during hard times with COVID. And we understood the situation. And during that COVID period, Dare County Schools was having some issues up and down, trying to venture out ways of, as every other school district in the state of North Carolina. Dare County was not the only one. It was not easy for any school district in the state during COVID. But at the end, we had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Blackstock to bring this ship back to sale. Because the ship wasn't selling very, very well. And with his knowledge and love for Dare County, he came back and got this ship to sell. And I want to say I'm going to miss you. I love you and thank you. With that being said, do I have a motion on forward to, or Mr. Blackstock, would you like to talk?
I was going to make a comment, but it's not on the agenda and I don't want to break any of the rules, so.
Feel free, you got, you got the floor.
I just want, I, I appreciate the comments are a bit overwhelming, I'll have to say, but it's been my honor to work, uh, to, to cap my career and education here in Dare County. I can't think of a better place to do that. But again, I, I appreciate all the kind words and support and look forward to the next chapter in about three and a half months. You're not, not done with me yet.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Do I have a motion on forward to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Payne, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bright. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. N and A, motion to adjourn.